Good evening, everybody. It's 6:02. I'm going to call the order for Thursday, April 4th. The committee of the whole is scheduled for 6 o'clock. Can we have a roll call?
Mr. Gentry, Mr. Garin.
Here.
Mr. Troy, Mr. Quagliano, Mrs. Melendi.
Here.
Mrs. Walker.
Here.
Mr. Fleck.
I'm here. So, we have a barely have a quorum with this side of the dais and that side decided not to be here. So, let's go with the pledge of allegiance next. And Mr. Bealyn, floor is yours.
Good evening. We have some Huntley High School students who will come up and lead us in the pledge. And I'm gonna have Ms. Casper and Sam to come up and, I'm sorry, Ms. Johnson, sorry, to come up and introduce our students. I just wanna first, before we start the pledge, just say how impressed I am with these two ladies who guide our program and work very closely with Ms. Breeze, our department chair of special services, and just the awesome work that they do and the relationships they have with these group of students. It is absolutely amazing to see their interactions, and I'm happy for them being here today, so.
So, we have Annika Teeter, Emily Arvidson, Radhika Agarwal, and Matthew Cassaro.
Okay.
Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation under God, equal rights and liberty and justice for all.
Nice job.
Thank you.
All right, sit down. Okay, I have a few questions for you guys. Just feel free to answer, any one of you. First of all, thank you very much for coming today and leading us in the pledge. It's really an honor to have you guys lead us in that. What do you like about Huntley High School? Who'd like to answer?
Computers.
Computers? Good answer. Anyone else?
Alyssa.
I'm going to the computer lab.
Friends, that's nice.
I watch YouTube on the computer.
The teachers. The teachers. And the cafeteria for sure.
The teachers in the cafeteria, I'm with you on that. Okay.
Seeing my friends.
That's very nice. Okay, what do you want to do after you graduate?
I'm going to the computer lab.
Okay.
I want to play videos.
Oh, she wants to play videos.
My friends cheerleading.
Very nice.
I want to get a job.
Okay. Very good, very good. Okay, and I think I know the answer to what you're gonna say. What do you like to do for fun?
I watch YouTube on the computer.
Yes. Alright.
Participate in school musicals.
Nice.
Music.
Music, okay. Sure. What do you like to do for fun?
For fun, I like to play games.
Good. Okay, well, we're gonna come up behind you and take some pictures with you, okay? So, sit right there, we'll be right up, and we'll take our pictures. But thank you again for leading us in the pledge.
And as we're taking pictures, our students have some gifts to give to you. This week was Autism Awareness Week, and so we have some autism awareness shirts that we wore here at the high school, which is why you see many of us in shirts today. And we have an additional gift to give to you as well, so.
Guitar. I go to school at Huntley High School.
Thank you, parents. Okay, um, next item is student recognition. Let's see, we have a couple of things here, so let's start with the academic spotlight. Okay, we're gonna, okay, we'll go, we'll get back to that. We got another one here. Okay, we have, uh, let's see, a couple of, well, let's start with the high school wrestlers. Oh, Mr. Bealyn, let's go back to that. You're up again. No pressure.
So, at the March Board meeting, we came, the National Merit Scholarship Program to recognize a large group of students who won a national merit award, and it was over 75,000 students who get recognized, and they start narrowing it down. And we had some students who made it to the semifinalists, Amanda Favilla and Harini Marchandi. If you all could come up, ladies. Out of that 75,000 students who are recognized, they're, they've, across the nation, they've narrowed it down to about 15,000 now, and so these ladies have made it to that level based off of their PSAT and NMSQT tests. So, they have performed and excelled and have reached a level with these other 15,000 students across the nation, which says a lot. And we're so fortunate to be able to recognize these young ladies, so I'll have them introduce them.
Hi, I'm Harini, and I'll be studying biology next year. I don't know where exactly, but I'm still figuring that part out, but I know I will be studying biology.
Hi, I'm Amanda Favilla. I'm gonna be studying computer engineering either at U of I or Northwestern, one of the two.
So, we are so excited about these ladies' futures, and we're excited to have them. And also, congratulations, and wanna give you these two certificates. Let's just give them a huge round of applause.
Mr. Bealyn and girls, please come on up. You know, we have to do that whole picture thing, so come on around. As Mr. Quagliano pointed out, they also teach biology at the University of Illinois, if you're still looking for a school, so. Okay, uh, next is, uh, let's see, we have a high school wrestler that we're gonna recognize, I hear. Actually, I know this already, but it's very cool.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you again for the opportunity to come before you with another terrific accomplishment, and this one is indeed a standout tonight. From Huntley High School Athletics, we bring you David Ferrante with a really cool backend to the statement, state champion. David, this year, was regional, sectional, and 170-pound state champion in the state of Illinois, so congratulations, David. We'll invite up Coach Bertelsman to give a little more detail in a second, but I just want to share with you how inspirational David, along with many of our student athletes, inspiration is to all of us. David, you probably didn't know this, but as you know, I went down to the state meet, and I came back and plea, and came back home and said to my family, "We have, we're at the cusp of greatness here for our high school. Would you like to come back down with me because," to Champaign, I keep saying down, sorry, I was in Champaign, Illinois, "come back down with me and witness this?" And without question, my family jumped right in, David, and we all came down to watch you win the state championship, and my eight-year-old daughter loved what you did at the end, which is the cartwheel. Congratulations, David, you're an inspiration, and what an incredible accomplishment. So, Coach Bertelsman.
Hello.
Hello.
I brought notes. Hello, board, hello administrators, Dr. Rowe, Mrs. Walker. Rihanna said I should say hi to you, so hello. I, I've made a yearly thing of coming to these board meetings now. I always tell you I'm gonna be back, and I most definitely will probably be back for a couple of years, hopefully a lot of years. Real quick, before I get to David, about my team this year, we went 22 and 9, undefeated in conference for the third year straight. We outscored our opponents in conference 454 to 129. So, that's like every time we go against a conference opponent, we won 57 to 16. So, we're pretty good around here. Our losses this year, five of them were to nationally ranked teams. When I got to Huntley, the AD at the time told me that we weren't allowed to go south of 90. I go, "You do know that's three miles away." So, now we travel to St. Louis, Rochester, Minnesota. We go all over the place for competition. One Saturday this year, we lost to three teams ranked in the top 30 in the nation, and that was just a Saturday. And then at our Clash Tournament, we wrestle, and one day, we wrestle three teams that placed in the top three in Minnesota. So, you know, our losses are to very, very good teams. David's one of eight state qualifiers we had this year, so that means over half of our varsity team qualified for state. And what's cool is it's two freshmen, Jake Jensen and Joaquin Miranda, two Southmoors, Jackowitz, Jeremy Jackowitz, excuse me, and Andrew Lira, two juniors, David and Sammy Spencer, and two seniors, Ganon Kozowski and A.J. Hinkle. So, we got half, almost half the team coming back that are state qualifiers, so we'll be pretty good, and looks like for the next couple of years, I got state qualifiers lined up. Leading to David, David dominant is a word. I think the kids call him, I think he's the machine. Are you the machine or beast? I don't know, what are you? I don't know. Uh, real quick, he went 46 and 2 on the year. He had one tough opponent this year, and, you know, he had his struggles against him, but no one else really came close. Out of the 46 matches he won, 40 of them he won by bonus points. In the state tournament, he bonus pointed his way through, which is pretty impressive in the state of Illinois. He's just crazy, amazing when on the mat. We've known this for a while. Two years ago, when he was a freshman, we came here, he placed, he placed fourth. Last year was a tough year for him, dealing with injuries, and left a bad taste in his mouth and everybody's mouth, so, you know, this year was something else to watch. You know, he didn't give up many points at all. So, everything you can do right on the mat, he did. He is our first state champion at Huntley High School. For a program that's only 19 years old, first state champion, we've had, we've had fifth, geez, I gotta add up, 20 state qualifiers in the last three years, which is impressive. We always come, come to play in February, and that's when we need to be tough. And David didn't give up a takedown, I think, since right before New Year's. So, not giving up a takedown is pretty impressive. He's number one in his class, so that's double impressive. Number one in his class, I, we went to the Clash Tournament, and they give an all-academic team, and I put in his information, and for some reason, he didn't get on the all-academic team. And they were naming kids, and, you know, they would name the kids' accomplishments, and one kid was top 10 in his class, and the school had 232 kids in it. So, I'm like, woo, alright. And I talked to the people, and in my email, I sent it too early. So, I got, I was anxious to get his information out there, and it didn't click onto their server, and they found it, and then they gave him the award and announced that he also made the all-tournament team there. But number one out of 700, and I think 67, is our junior class, something around there. He's going to Northwestern, committed to Northwestern, a Big Ten wrestling school, and academically, he's going to be a doctor. So, he brings everything to the table. He helps lead the team, he's been captain probably since sophomore year. You know, he helps run practice. He, I let him and Sam Spencer run practice and let them go. They know what they're doing, and they're drill sergeants. So, I mean, there's, the sky's the limit for this kid, and I'm sure I'll be back here next year giving the same speech, so. So, David Ferrante.
I would like to thank the District 158 Board for giving me the honor to represent you guys as the first state champion for Huntley, and I hope there's many more to come in the future. I'd like to thank Coach Bertelsman for a great year with us, putting in his heart and soul to this team as always. It's truly, really appreciated, and obviously, thank you very much for your kind words.
They have wrestling in Illinois, too. Okay, congratulations. Alright, uh, we have another group of wrestlers coming up. Let's have the Marlowe team come up.
Tonight is the night of wrestling. So, Marlowe was proud of our team. We had six students qualify for state, and two of our students placed fifth in state. So, Coach Francis, if you could come up and talk about our students and the team?
Thank you, board, Dr. Rowe, administrators. So, we'd like to take time to recognize Zach Hornickel and Adam Pena for their outstanding contributions to the Marlowe Wrestling Program. So, Zach and Adam, if you guys wanna come on up? Hopefully, you do see Coach Bartelsman quite often, and a lot of it, I hopefully will have to do with a lot of the middle school wrestlers that we continue to produce. Both these wrestlers demonstrate the characteristics of what it means to be a Marlowe wrestler. These characteristics include dedication, commitment, toughness, leadership, and most importantly, sportsmanship. Recognizing Zach, Zach Hornickel, is a seventh-grade wrestler at Marlowe Middle School. He wrestled at the 75-pound weight class. He had an overall record of 29 and 5. He was a regional champion, took third at sectionals, and out of over 200 schools this year, he placed fifth overall. Great job. Adam Pena is an eighth-grade wrestler from Marlowe Middle School. He wrestled in the 105-pound weight class. He had an overall record of 25 and 5. He once again was a regional champion, took third in sectionals, and also placed fifth overall out of 200 students. So, nice job, Ann. Not to mention, most importantly, they had great-looking hair on both of them, so. Good job, guys. Look forward to next year, and Adam will be participating, will be transitioned to the high school, and wrestling for Coach Bartelsman next year. So, nice job, guys.
All right, thank you. So you may recall that about this time last year, we were in front of you, and Mr. Truax actually was able to speak along with Dr. Klot about our high school social studies review. And as you see in the memo, we've really taken a backwards design approach to the social studies review. We started with the high school. We wanted to make sure we really aligned based on what students needed for graduation and success after high school. So last year, we did our high school core courses. This year, we engaged in our review of curriculum for the new social studies standards at middle school, along with picking up as well some of our high school electives. And then we're looking out into the future at that backward design with our elementary, infusing our social study standards into our interdisciplinary units that we will be writing during the course of this summer and next year. So we are actually really excited about this. As a former social studies teacher, among many former social studies teachers here, the C3 standards, the new social study standards, are absolutely phenomenal for kids. When I think about teaching with the prior standards, which were from 1997, they could not be more different. And again, when I think, when you hear Mr. Johnson and Mr. Truax talk, you might have your memory jogged to last year when we talked about how those impact kids at the high school. So they have taken a great process to bring that work to the middle school. One last piece I just want to mention in terms of process that I think is fantastic is that Mr. Truax has been working very, very closely with Mr. Johnson to work with the middle-school teachers throughout the entire course of this review. So as high school department chair, he's really been previewing the structure that we are going to be looking at for next year, having our high school department chairs in our core areas, working with our middle-school teachers. This was, the success of this arrangement actually was really one of the key factors that caused us to make that recommendation to go that direction. So I think you'll see the results of that tonight. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Johnson and Mr. Truax, and they're going to come on up and talk to you about the review, walk you through it a little bit, and some of the pieces that need some approval.
All right, good evening. We thought everybody was here for the social studies review. Apparently not. All right, so I'm William Johnson, this is Brian Truax. He is the social studies department chair at Huntley High School, and I'm the 6th through 12th curriculum director. We are going to walk you through the work we've done thus far for the social studies review. So just kind of an overview, we're going to start by going through an overall view of the process that we've gone through to get to the point that we have. Then we're going to cover the major changes that we've made. Excuse me, went one side too far. There it is. They're out of order for some reason, I apologize. Then we're going to go through the major changes that we've made thus far this year. We're going to end with two recommendations for the Board of Education. The first recommendation is Appendix C in your board packet, which is approval of our new curriculum maps. And the other one is Appendix D, which is recommendation for new course proposals at the May board meeting. All right, so we're going to talk about three buckets, if you will, this evening. The first one is the high school core courses, which were remapped last year, the middle school courses, which we focused on this year, and the high school electives, which we also focused on this year. So we began by breaking down the standards and really looking, what did they mean? What are other districts around the nation doing? And how do we best implement them in middle school? We spent a lot of time on that, and then we really spent the bulk of our time working on the curriculum development. What can we do to best meet the needs of our students? Rather than looking for a book and then trying to squeeze in a curriculum, we really built our own curriculum from the ground up. This is truly a Huntley School District 158 curriculum, and it really does meet the true needs of our students. After that, we selected resources. We are extremely fortunate. The National Social Studies Convening Convention was in Chicago this year, lucky for us. So we had several full days to really look at materials from around the world and what best fit the needs of our students. From there, we brought in five vendors to choose what best fit the needs of our updates. And that's kind of where we are for the middle school core courses, the high school electives. Obviously, the high school core courses are a year ahead of that process. They have also completed all their assessments and are working on implementation as we speak. We will implement our social studies curriculum for middle school and the high school electives next year, as well as finish writing our assessments over this summer. Pending any questions, I'll be followed by Mr. Truax.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having us. In true social studies fashion, I have a tendency to talk too long. I think I say that every time to you, but I just say that so that if I notice your eyes are glazing over, I will try to speed it up. I'll look at you, Dr. Rowe. Please feel free to hold up the timer if you need to. Just a quick overview of the social study standards as a whole. I know I said this last year, but it's always nice to review them, and that is the new standards that the state of Illinois adopted were a revised version of the national standards. And the reason that matters for us and our schools and our students is it really emphasizes them engaging with resources rather than just learning dates and materials. All right, so past history practices sometimes were really a bucket of information. You filled up your bucket, you dumped it on the paper, and you moved on. This new revision that we first adopted at the high school and are implementing right now, and now what will happen also in the middle schools starting next year, is a goal of trying to put sources and information in front of kids and have them dive into it. So they look at the stories of history, they look at primary sources, they look at geography, they look at cool things that we think are awesome, like population pyramids. Isn't that awesome, don't they? But anyway, so we give them the opportunity to look at those rather than purely engage with the textbook. And the goal being that kids nowadays are stuck in a position that we, as adults, are trying to figure out, which is what do you do with a ton of information? Right? Back in the day, it used to be you would go to one person, they'd tell you it, and you were good. We don't live in that world anymore. So our goal is with that, to really focus on college and career, really focus on the Common Core standards, which emphasize critical thinking, and giving that ownership to the kids. So, yeah, so we're doing that at the middle school. You can imagine the challenge with the middle school is how in the world do you bring 1776 into the 8th-grade classroom and say, "This is cool, I swear." So that's what we're working on going forward and what we've been putting into our maps. And so that's what you have in front of you. If you go to the other slide, I'll kind of outline what that really means. So at the high school level, just to give you an idea of how we're preparing the middle school students for the high school, just as kind of a reminder, at the high school level, our 9th-grade social studies course is a geography course. It's more human geography. So if you took a physical geography where you had to know where, like, the Himalayas are, I don't know if you ever had that opportunity back in the day, but I did. I struggle to remember all of those locations still, and I hate to admit that, but it's just true occasionally, we all use Google. So we made our 9th-grade class far more cultural-based and human-based. And so it really looks at different regions of the world. We ask questions like, "Why is the Japanese population declining?" Where you see a different population really skyrocketing. And we give kids those tools. And so we do that in 9th grade, we look at the human geography. Then 10th grade, we do a civics class, and then at 11th grade, we do a U.S. history class. A very similar model then is now being brought to the middle school, and that is dictated by the standards. So 6th grade will be one area that we've kind of let go of, which is ancient civilization. And so they're going to use ancient civ as an opportunity then to update geography. And so they're going to look at, some of the things you would think of as ancient would be like Mesopotamia, ancient Greece, they love Greece. And they're going to look through those, but then each time, they're required to update them to present day. So if we're looking at conflict from back in the day, now they're going to look at a present-day conflict, maybe India and Pakistan, and try to look at those political origins. Right? And so they'll do that in 6th grade. You can imagine the challenge, bringing 6th graders into resources in that level. So that's been what we spent time looking for with the vendors that you see in front of you in your appendix. And then 7th grade is a civics-based course. So it will be more government-based, but it will not be the same way that you would think of high school, because civics for a younger kid is really, for many of them, about them. I guess it's true for all adults, but it's really about them. At least I use my son as a good example, because we had a fight over whether or not he should read for three minutes right before I came here. So I'll contact my wife and find out how that's working out when I get out of here. Anyway. And then 8th grade will still be U.S. history. And so there will be parts of U.S. history in there, but that's just the content-wise, just so you're aware of what we've updated for middle school. And then in terms of what that really means, it's trying to prepare them for analysis and debate and so on. So there will be a great deal of opportunities for kids to delve into social studies and really kind of work with it, rather than just memorization, which has been sometimes what we've had in the past, just kind of collectively. And then finally, in terms of high school electives, we have looked at several of them with a goal of updating in regards to also the resources available, and then the curriculum as it applies to the new standards. So we've looked at psych and soc, our current issues courses, because present-day, as I'm sure you can imagine in your own adult life, there are a ton of things going on that are current and really politically messy. And so we updated those courses to reflect what's going on in terms of giving kids tools. So they're very media literacy-based, and so that's what we've kind of been doing. I'm trying to think if there's anything else, though. I can talk forever, I swear. I don't know what the timer is. So what questions do you have? Perfect.
Just a general question. When you think of the new standards from the state, is there something that stands out as, hey, they may have gotten that wrong, or is there something that you would, in your own professional opinion, have done differently?
I think the challenge with the new standards, there's both a positive and a negative depending on how we approach the curriculum. So I guess I'll say this in this regard. The old standards were very specific, and they were very specific around content. And so what they really outlined were a great deal of common detail you would have cohesively throughout the state of Illinois. The new standards are more general. They're really almost like a theme. So before, it might be look at the five major causes of World War I, right? And then you also might need to know a specific general. Now it's looking at what are the major causes of conflict throughout the world, and that's a standard. That's really, really general. So one of the critiques that can be leveled on the new standards is if we and the teachers who are implementing it don't really put some meat on that, it can make social studies very, very generic. And so it's a very real caution we went into the process with, knowing that if we didn't put kind of meat on those bones, we'd be probably kind of gutting something that we really care deeply about. Got it? Any other questions? Want to debate any current politics? I don't actually, I don't want to cry.
Not a question, but a comment. So I have a 6th grader, and she really enjoyed the Greek thing that you guys recently did, and she really got into it. So I think the standards are great, the updates of it, because I also have older children, and they were not as enthusiastic about social studies, and it seems like my youngest one is, so I think it's good.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. All right. Thank you.
In conclusion, once again, just for the May board meeting, we request that we recommend approval of our curriculum maps, which are Appendix C, and our new course materials, which are Appendix E, which will go on 30-day display starting tomorrow. Pending any further questions, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to 7.2, the Ombudsman Contract, Dr. Schlitzer.
Yes, so it's actually, this is something that we have returned to really only as an update with the Board in recent years. If you recall, when we first put in place our alternative school, close to two and a half years ago, we started it in January, contracting with Ombudsman Educational Services to be able to provide our educational services, and really turnkey. So our alternative school location, which is off-site, they retrofitted it, hired staff, we have students successfully working through there. Throughout the course of, and we specifically asked for that two-and-a-half-year contract, partly because we started it halfway through a year, and partly because we knew that we needed to give it a few years to succeed, evaluate it, make sure that we wanted to continue with that same model, and then move forward. So where we've landed, and Mr. Johnson, myself, and Ms. Letkowitz and Mr. Beal at the high school have really been working forward evaluating our alternative school every single year, very, very successful for our students and moving through some of our at-risk students. So what I would say is, in general, the alternative school is doing exactly what it was intended to do. Where we really are evaluating is the service delivery from Ombudsman Educational Services to see if we want to continue contracting, or if we wanted to look at what it would take to run an internal model, where we would just ourselves, staff that, find a location, and move forward that way. If some of you recall, the original proposal actually revolved around doing that ourselves, and then we found the contracted services that we felt would do a good job at a little bit lower risk and about the same cost. So after the results of reviewing that, where we've landed is we would like to, because our contract is up with Ombudsman, we would like to extend our contract for a year. We want to continue working with them. They are doing a good job. Rather than sign a three-year contract, we prefer a year, because we do want to always continue reevaluating and having that flexibility that if we choose to do it ourselves and provide those services, we can. So we've worked very, very closely with them, monitoring details. They've been flexible to the degree that they can to this point, where I think probably they would tell you that we may be a challenging account for them, because we're pushing them hard to provide, you know, blended capabilities, flexible capabilities. We have, as you know, a progressive approach to some more traditional type of educational practices, but they are meeting the needs of our students at this time. So what you see in front of you is a one-year contract with Ombudsman that we would like to recommend that the Board approve. And all this would do would just be to simply continue unabated our alternative school services as they currently stand. So all terms of the contract are substantively the same as what we're looking at right now. There've been a couple of minor tweaks just for language to make it more accurate, but in general, it is the same contract that we're currently under. So I would take any questions, but other than that, would ask that we could move that forward to the board meeting for approval.
Questions? Good. All right. All right, then I would recommend we move that forward. And we move on to 7.3, the contract with education elements for support of Vanguard Vision at Huntley High School.
Thank you very much. And as you've also heard quite a bit about Vanguard Vision, very excited about our competency base pilot moving through its first year, knowing that we're
So our alternative school location, which is off-site, they retrofitted it, hired staff, we have students successfully working through there. Throughout the course of, and we specifically asked for that two-and-a-half-year contract, partly because we started it halfway through a year, and partly because we knew that we needed to give it a few years to succeed, evaluate it, make sure that we wanted to continue with that same model, and then move forward. So where we've landed, and Mr. Johnson, myself, and Ms. Letkowitz and Mr. Beal in at the high school have really been working forward evaluating our alternative school every single year, very, very successful for our students and moving through some of our at-risk students. So what I would say is, in general, the alternative school is doing exactly what it was intended to do. Where we really are evaluating is the service delivery from Ombudsman Educational Services to see if we want to continue contracting, or if we wanted to look at what it would take to run an internal model, where we would just ourselves, staff that, find a location, and move forward that way. If some of you recall, the original proposal actually revolved around doing that ourselves, and then we found the contracted services that we felt would do a good job at a little bit lower risk and about the same cost. So after the results of reviewing that, where we've landed is we would like to, because our contract is up with Ombudsman, we would like to extend our contract for a year. We want to continue working with them, they are doing a good job. Rather than sign a three-year contract, we prefer a year, because we do want to always continue reevaluating and having that flexibility that if we choose to do it ourselves and provide those services, we can. So we've worked very, very closely with them, monitoring details, they've been flexible to the degree that they can to this point, where I think probably they would tell you that we may be a challenging account for them, because we're pushing them hard to provide, you know, blended capabilities, flexible capabilities. We have, as you know, a progressive approach to some more traditional type of educational practices, but they are meeting the needs of our students at this time. So what you see in front of you is a one-year contract with Ombudsman that we would like to recommend that the board approve. And all this would do would just be to simply continue unabated our alternative school services as they currently stand. So all terms of the contract are substantively the same as what we're looking at right now. There've been a couple of minor tweaks just for language to make it more accurate, but in general, it is the same contract that we're currently under. So I would take any questions, but other than that, would ask that we could move that forward to the board meeting for approval.
Questions? Good. All right. All right, then I would recommend we move that forward. And we move on to 7.3, the Contract with Education Elements for Support of Vanguard Vision at Huntley High School.
Thank you very much. And as you've also heard quite a bit about Vanguard Vision, very excited about our competency-based pilot moving through its first year, knowing that we're scaling that to sophomore year. So we'll be bringing you some more substantive updates on the programming soon. At this time, we've really been working deeply with the high school teachers, with the high school administration, and with Dr. Rowe, to look and say, what is it going to take to really do a stellar job scaling a program that is progressive, that's on the forefront, and that really has no roadmap? So as we are somewhat familiar with, we get out in front of things, because that's what we do for kids. And so when we looked at what kind of support might be possible to help us with scaling this program, we actually turned back to a partner that we've worked with previously. Education Elements is one of the premier learning partners for personalization of learning and competency-based learning in the country. They're actually quite pervasive and quite flexible. We worked with them early this year to provide some professional development to our administrative team around personalized learning, and they did a great job. So we worked with some of their leadership, and they put together really a customized proposal to be able to support the scaling of our program. So what we're looking at specifically is instructional practices. So what does this mean for our students to continue learning in that flexible environment? What are best practices out there? And what kinds of support will it take for the teachers? Now we'll have eight instead of four, to continue working forward and really delivering that high quality. We were able to allocate some additional grant monies from this year, so it would be entirely funded by federal grant monies that were reallocated to our district, actually, late in the year. That happens occasionally when other districts don't spend their funds. So in a way, it was a sort of a perfectly timed event, because we learned of our additional grant monies at the same time as we were really looking forward about these support needs. And so we put together this proposal with Education Elements for support of our teachers. And so you have in front of you the contract and statement of work, and that's what we would just like some discussion of. So take any questions, and then would like to request that we could move that forward for approval in support of Vanguard. So any questions are welcome.
Any questions?
Yeah, just on the, I guess it's section three of the contract, the, any concerns with the language there around ownership of processes, materials? And does that inhibit, or is there a risk in any way of, if we were to discontinue, are we cut out of some of the stuff we need?
Yeah, no, that's a great question, and it's actually fairly standard language. It was in the last contract we signed with them. So essentially, we have access to anything that they've either created for us or provided for us as part of the terms of the contract. For example, in our last relationship with them, earlier this year, they gave us this, it was an entire personalized learning development manual, and it's ours to use now. So this really just means that we are not going to take privileged work that they've created and go sell it or share it as our own. I mean, there's really nothing out of this that we would be creating that we would be concerned about them taking. So really, that's just sort of standard protection language. It's a good question.
I think the gist of what's different this time around versus last time, last time they provided us a one-day training, whereas this time it'll be ongoing support. And the target of this Ed Elements contract will be to really support the instructional improvement and instructional foundation that is different in teaching in this competency pilot. And as you'll see on our visit this coming Thursday, one of the things the teachers will share with you of what the lessons learned and areas that they struggled, we did, in my opinion, an exceptional job at creating the structure that the students would live in and the teachers would teach from, and had a, and I think it, from my, in my opinion, to be expected, kind of maybe a greater sense of our own ability to adapt to a new teaching style. And that was one of the areas that they found that they kind of pushed up against. Living in a great structure, they bit off more than they could chew with what we wanted to accomplish. And instruction had to become so different, they were fighting the teaching in the traditional world in a much more innovative structure. So the reason where this comes in is going to be so beneficial with this second group of teachers, we're focusing on how to change instruction since the structure exists, and thinking that year-one group will really be able to help them acclimate to the structure, while the year-two group can really push forward and help take a step with innovative instruction teaching in the competency and problem-based world, which is so different from what they've taught in the past. So it's really that layered support so that they can work together. We think it's going to be really beneficial to all. We've been really impressed with this group.
Good. Any other questions? All right, I guess we'll recommend we move that forward to the next board meeting. And we will move on to 7.4, Elementary Explore Inquiry Special. Dr. Schlichter.
Thank you. So we are very excited about this, actually. So as you know, we are adding our elementary inquiry special. We have branded it Explore as a title. I mean, actually, I think some of our principals just came in from interviews for teachers for that program, which is why you just saw them walking in. They've actually been hurt at work for quite a few hours on that. So what we are needing to do right now is to just present to you and then ask for your approval later this month on the programming, the curriculum that we would like to do. And this is what we find so exciting, is that after reviewing several different options for that inquiry special, we are going to be looking at a Project Lead the Way launch, which is the elementary programming for Project Lead the Way, really starting to stack that up as the beginning of a very well vertically articulated Project Lead the Way sequence, which I think will absolutely enrich our students as they move through the system. So with that, I'm going to actually ask Dr. McCrindell to come up. She's been working most specifically on building this out. And so she's just going to walk through a couple of details of the plan and the details of our Project Lead the Way launch, and then take any questions.
All right. So thank you. As Dr. Schlichter said, we are really excited about this Elementary Explore special class for our elementary students. And we really tried to identify what the purpose of the course was, and we landed on we want our students to be empowered to be those problem solvers, critical thinkers, collaborative, creative, adaptable, and taking on any challenge. So Project Lead the Way definitely fit the needs when we were looking at what curriculum resources they would be. So one of, two of the things we were looking at was the engineering design framework. We're going to build the course on those standards and also utilize the next-generation science standards so that students are getting used to asking those questions and grappling with those tough issues and problem-solving from kindergarten all the way up through our school system, which is exciting. So with Project Lead the Way launch is their elementary version. We are using it at the high school, currently the high school version. But basically, it follows very similar, hands-on, inquiry-based. We give you a problem, students explore. There's not one way to do it. They have to really try it out in their own, their ways. There's not a right answer. And so as Dr. Schlichter alluded to, the principals were just finishing up interviews. They've been in them since one o'clock today, so they had a long afternoon of those. But we're really looking for teachers that will be able to facilitate that learning, because it's a different classroom than necessarily what's going on in the science classroom in the elementary room right now. So having a teacher that can allow students to make mistakes and ask questions and really push them to be able to grapple with that and come up with those answers. So Project Lead the Way, we put some information in the board packet. They have that option for us. They have a lot of different units. When we were looking at pricing it out and trying to figure out what would make sense for both our new teachers, who would potentially be teaching five-grade levels if they were at certain buildings, or three different grade levels if they were at different buildings, we wanted to make sure that we weren't purchasing too many units to where they felt like they couldn't do it well. So we wanted to do a layered approach. So year-one, we're recommending having three units for kinder through second grade, that each grade would do the same three units the first year, then we would purchase additional three the next year. And so then the grades that already did those units would do the new units, and then the final three, the third year. So then by the end of three years, every grade would have their own sequence of three units. The units take about a trimester each, which fits perfectly into our schedule. And the way we selected them right now is we just really chose the most engaging units. We asked Project Lead the Way, which were the ones that kids were most excited about, and these are the ones that they're recommending. And so you can see, we kept, put a description of those in here, you're welcome to read them. But I would be excited to learn about grids and games, or collisions, or infections. I mean, I think that would be awesome, and I would love my own son to do that. So that would be great. With the budget, we have an anticipated budget here for you as well. We base it off of current predictions for students and for enrollment for next school year, and then we try to build it out for the next two years, but with enrollment numbers shifting, of course, it might go up or down based on that. Within the budget, what's great is we've included, there's a site license that each school would have to maintain, like they do at the high school level currently. And then we also included training. So teachers would need to go through a two-day training for this. We would look to do it this spring, actually, for our teachers. That training really focuses on helping teachers learn to teach in an inquiry-based classroom. So it's not about what do you teach, it's more about how do you ask the right questions? How do you support a student who's struggling? What do you do when a student's getting it? How do you challenge them in a different way? So we would be looking to do that. And then there'd be a follow-up training for one or two teachers to take that next level of training, where then they could actually become lead trainers on, for anyone in the future, for Project Lead the Way, for the launch cycle. So we included that into our proposal. We actually just received the opportunity to go to visit St. Charles District 303, where they're actually using this right now, and we could actually, we could go look at it in April and send some teachers to see it in action. So we're excited that they'll get to see it in action, get trained on it, and have it in place, and have a really strong opportunity for our students. Any questions?
A question on the training.
Yeah.
I think you kind of explained it, year-one, it's really not training the substance, but kind of the process. What about year-two and year-three, if we have new teachers come in? Is there any kind of update training or anything? Is that, how does that work?
Yeah, so the, there's two levels of training. So all of the current, the seven new teachers would go through Level One this spring, and then we would send two teachers that were trained on Level One next school year to the big, the full training, and then they would be able to train any future teachers. So they would be designated trainers in our district, and then they could train our own staff in the future. We talked about sending like an instructional coach as well, to kind of have that person be able to train in that lens, so we'd be able to do that in the future. Mm-hmm.
Other questions?
Yeah, just maybe a dumb question here, but how does, like, what does this take the place on during the day, or how does this fit into the day of the student?
Yeah. So the principals are working on their schedules right now, but they are, this will be an additional special. So depending on how the schedules work out, it could be two 30-minute days a week, or a one-hour chunk of time one day a week for different students. And so once we finalize those, it'll come away from some part of the day. We'd be looking at probably, you know, the, right now, science and social studies is in that literacy block currently, so we would, we could shave some time off there a little bit, but yeah.
Is that what the other district did as well, or that same?
Yes. And as we're looking at those, the interdisciplinary units that our teachers on special assignments, our unit, curriculum writers will be writing in the future, we'll be trying to align them to some of these units so that it makes sense. So what a teacher's doing in the classroom, in the main classroom, will support what's going on in this special as well, so that there's some type of connection. So we'll be able to kind of increase that throughout the day.
Okay.
Anything else?
Any other questions? All right, recommend that we move that forward, next board meeting.
Thank you.
And we move to 7.5, the SEL Review Update. Dr. Schlichter.
[laughing] [inaudible] 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 [inaudible]
Any questions? Thank you for all your updates. And we'll move it over to Mrs. Melendi.
Okay. Policy Committee, 8.1, press update. These are just changes to the board policies as recommended in the March issue of press, and they should be in your board packet. So, unless you have any questions, or Dr. Rowe has anything to add.
Nothing really of any substance to add. The, most of the updates really are aligned to footnote and research supporting some of the policies that are currently in place. A couple of policies that were recommended were pulled for kind of additional detail. There was a number of updates recommended on safety and security that had to do with threat assessments that Mr. Dean felt he wanted to dive in, and spent a little bit more time evaluating. You know, as he's shared with you all in the past, you know, we feel really strongly about where we are in terms of safety and security, having the luxury of having a chief security officer. And a lot of these policies are still, we may already be ahead in some of our current practices. So, he's evaluating as to where that fits in. And if there's a need to bring forth an update to that policy, he'll do so in the future. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, we'll move that forward, and I'll turn over to Finance.
Okay. Finance Committee, 9.1, we have our payables, purchase orders, and press checks, dispersments, et cetera. Any questions or concerns on any of these? Okay, I'll move those forward to the Board. 9.2, Revenue and Expenditures Report. Mr. Altmaier.
Thank you very much. You have in front of you the February Executive Summary. We continue to track within budget. I will have it be brief tonight, because anything I say to you is pretty much echoing everything I've said to you the last several months. So, with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those at this time.
I see less red on the dashboard.
It's, as we move along, it hopefully should, it should be that way. I will say, in the next month, which will be the third quarter ending for March, the March financial, third quarter ending for the year, we will be providing the Board for the next three months, or at least the next two months, a forecast for where we think we will be at year-end. So, you'll, you'll have an added couple pages to the, to the monthly executive summary. So, stay tuned on that. That'll give the Board, as well as Administration, a much more clearer picture as to where we think we will be come June 30th.
It's becoming more obvious, health, health is going to end up probably as close to the budget as we're going to be as we've been in a while.
Correct. Correct. The days of, of having, well, I shouldn't say that, the days of having significant surplus on that line item. Certainly, the last two years, we've had a lot of large claims coming through the pipeline. So, you know, we'll, we'll see where we end up next year, but we are, we are, you know, we are beefing up that budget for next year as we have the last several years.
Yeah.
You know, they always said you have three or four bad years, excuse me, you have one or two bad years, and about three or four good years. So, we're, we're due for some good years.
Yeah, okay. It's like the Cubs' bullpen. Ouch.
White Sox, too.
All right. Any other questions concerning the Financial Executive Summary? And we will move on to 9.3, which is Fiscal Reports. Mr. Altmaier.
Thank you very much for the fiscal memo. I think there's only, there's two items that I definitely want to talk about. Senate Bill 1043, last week. I had a great opportunity last Wednesday to go down to Springfield. Ms. Melendi was down there. It was fantastic. Had an opportunity to meet with the Revenue Committee and several senators to really outline and explain the importance of Senate Bill 1043 on all taxing districts, and kind of explain the nitty-gritty as to, you know, what is driving that bill. I think where we are now is, and Ms. Melendi said this to me while I was down there, that bill today has more traction than it did in prior year. In other words, it's further along, we've got more people talking about it, and hopefully, we can continue to move it forward. Ms. Melendi, anything to add on that?
I agree. I, I think, I was going to talk about this, too, so good timing. We're fortunate that we have Mr. Altmaier on our side, because he did come down. He did a really good job of explaining a complex formula to people that know just enough to be dangerous. So, I think next week, we're meeting with some CPS and Cook County folks who are a little unsure of what the bill does, and how it affects them. Worst case, we'll get a carve-out for them, which means we'll just take them out of the bill. It's very common. And hopefully, move it along, and it'll pass out of both houses before the end of session. So, it's, it's going well.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's going to save us a lot of money.
Correct.
And other districts as well.
All taxing districts, right.
Good job.
So, with that, that's Senate Bill 1043. The other point on the fiscal memo is the, is the tax levy, is the tax computation. It's, it's normally this time of year that we receive the updated and final new construction and final EAV and tax extension numbers from both counties. Over the last, hmm, probably two and a half, three weeks, we've been working with both counties to actually get up-to-date extensions that kind of pass our audit test, so to speak. About a week ago, we learned that, we kept seeing changes in, in some of the tax computations coming out of McHenry, and it was primarily driven on the new construction number within the tax computation. That new construction number is really, a really important number on our tax computation, because that really drives additional property taxes coming to the district, whether it's for brand-new houses, or it's brand-new commercial property being put into, put into service. And so, we saw some fluctuations in that account. And after asking a lot of questions, we learned that the county was making adjustments to our new construction for some prior-year, what they thought were over-assessments to last year's new construction numbers. And I kind of scratched my head, and I said, "Well, but that's last year's extension. That, you, you can't do that. That, you, you can't adjust my new construction number." And so, we went back and forth, back and forth with, with the, the county assessor and the clerk's office. And meanwhile, Kane County is sitting and waiting, and their tax comp appears correct, but they're sitting and waiting, because they're relying on the final correct new construction number on their end, from McHenry County. So, long story short, after talking with several attorneys, pro bono, which is good news, as well as the Illinois Department of Revenue, the executive director down there of the Property Tax Revenue Division, we were able to get the county to think correctly. And just so you know the impact, it was about $2.9 million worth of new construction adjustment, which is about $130,000 to the district every year, moving forward. So, so, the good news is, we were able to convince the county, working with the attorneys, as well as the Illinois Department of Revenue, to make that adjustment. And that didn't just benefit us, that benefited the village, right? It was 2.9 million of new construction for our own Village of Huntley, the Fire Protection District, District 47 had a piece of that. There was a lot of taxing districts that actually benefited from, that's how I spent my three hours down in Springfield, was talking on the phone with attorneys in the Illinois Department of Revenue. So, we were able to get to the bottom of it, and, and moving forward, we looked pretty good. But with that, we received the fact of final, excuse me, tax computations today. And so, I will be sharing that updated information with the Board at the next board meeting, from final new construction numbers, to final EAV, to final tax rates, so that the Board has a really good understanding of where we are from a tax rate perspective, EAV perspective, and new construction perspective. So, stay tuned on that. I will provide that at the next board meeting. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have regarding any of that.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, I have none. So, thank you for that, and thank you for your efforts, because it was an effort, definitely. Good job. Then, we just have on 9.3, we have the Activity Funds Report. So, any questions regarding that? No. Okay. Finance is done.
HR. First item is Item 10.1, Human Resource Updates. Mr. Zir.
As Dr. Slick referenced earlier, we had some interviews going on, you know, right before the meeting started this evening. There were probably interviews every day this week in the district. So, we are at our peak hiring season right now, which is good, because we're out there early in the game. So, getting positions filled and recommendations coming through HR, and also getting ready to make shifts in the district based on student enrollment and needs across the Board. So, starting to get really busy with the principals' hiring. So, hopefully, we'll have, at the April Board Meeting, some new recommendations for new positions moving forward.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Move on to Item 10.2, fairly straightforward proposition, I think. State-approved Director of Special Education, Ms. Lombard.
Right. Pretty straightforward, right? We can, we have two directors, we can only have one be named that. So, for next year with changeover and stuff, we are going to need to take a resolution forward to approve Mr. Kevin Wolfe as our district state-approved director, being named at ISBE, and we will still have two directors in district. But, any questions?
Any questions from anyone? If not, we will move that forward. Thank you. And hand it over to Building and Grounds, Mr. Troy.
Thank you. Item 11.1, O&M Updates. Anything to highlight on the O&M Updates there?
Yes, we have a few things. One, a topic that I usually get asked about when I travel around the district, or someone that knows about this, is our solar project. Where is it? How we're doing? Our partner at Forefront is very confident that the renewable energy credits are going to be a sure thing. It's not final, it's still under review, it's delayed. And as I understand, Mark has more information on that, I don't know how much in detail you want to hear, but they are taking the initiative, and they did put back in writing, just to confirm with them, at their risk, they're going forward with construction design document development. Soil borings were done on two of the properties in the last few days. Survey crew was on, was on-site a couple of days ago. They regrouped today afraid of the rain, and are going to come back later this week. But, we should be seeing preliminary construction drawings pretty soon. And another related matter, thanks to Mr. Troy, we were made aware of McHenry County Defenders, and McHenry County College sponsored an event this morning. It was free to the district on the matter of planting, native plantings around our solar array installations. And it has been discussed in our partnership with Forefront, that this be part of the project, and they therefore sent a representative from their design team, not Forefront, but their, their engineering team from TRC, attended today. Mr. Altmaier was there with me as well. It was a very informative meeting, and the picture that Dan so kindly put up for us is, is our vision of what, after about three years, solar array areas would look like. And there are all kinds of benefits beyond the aesthetics, and in the long term, something like this is actually easier to maintain, and less, more cost-effective. So, we think that's really, it's a win-win, if this sort of thing be done. It requires a little bit of management, but overall, the, the amount of mowings and things are much less. I know some of the Board members attended some of the zoning review meetings, and McHenry County Defenders were there. And the villages reaffirmed what the public's comments were from those folks, that their vision is that this is the sort of thing we plant around the solar array. So, that's, that's what we're looking for, for that.
Now, I would just like to add, the McHenry County Defenders actually came and made public comment at our village meetings in support of our project. They've been a really, a really positive partner through the process for us, and giving us this, this educational opportunity for how to enhance our project is really much appreciated, and so, kudos to them.
I think it says a lot for our county, that they, they shared pictures, and Mark and I have seen other installations where it's nothing like this, it's gravel and weeds. And, and our county, knowing that this is going to be an explosion in our county in the next few years, is something they're looking for, is to, to make it, to make it a betterment for our county.
I think it really helps that one of our former teachers is on the, the McHenry County Defender leadership team, Pat Waller.
The other things on the updates, construction continues. We've got some bleachers going in around the district, middle schools, high school. Made a little disruption there, and we've been keeping in touch with the school athletic teams to make sure that we're not inconveniencing them. I think we're doing all right, and from what I hear from them. I wanted to point out to the Board, the last page, something I brought to you last month that I've enhanced a little bit. I left this meeting and dove right back into the Energy Star program, real deep, last page of the O&M Updates there. And Mr. Altmaier prompted me to take a look at something really deep here. What are averages on our Energy Star rating over time? And I also found that in the program, what they did is realizing that people were going to be very concerned when they saw their ratings drop, to take another look from a different direction, which is another holistic way to look at your energy consumption of your building, that I've heard about before, is to take all your electricity consumption, and all your natural gas consumption, and turn that into one common energy unit. And then, you have a total energy unit consumed by your building, per square foot of building. And that's what this is, KBTU, kilobtuas per square foot of energy consumption. And if you look at those numbers, and I gave some, 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 some reduction percentages for you, you know, overall, we've done, we've done great since we started most of the initiatives that we began in 2010. The last year and a half or so, we've had a little bit of waning. The really big drop there, Leggie, we know what that is. We've done some recent control work. We're, look, as I mentioned before, we're looking for that to be improved. But, it's, it's very common for buildings to degrade, you know, a very small percentage in recent years. We were wondering if, if it was to the point where we needed to maybe consider a recommissioning of some of the major control work that CTS did. But, the interesting thing to note is that if you look at the bottom line there, the averages on the Energy Star numbers, overall, we're still creeping up on the average improvement. But, we did lose some on the Energy Star rating, as we know. We have several, I have several other irons in the fire to help us gain back some of those certifications. ComEd just invited us to be one of 12 school districts, to be part of a group participation, where they have monthly meetings to provide us education, visit us, give ideas, help us procure newer incentive money for any ideas they might come up with, and also invite our team members to go to educational group meetings on a quarterly basis. So, we're looking forward to further discussion of what our investment is, and that opportunity, where our commitment needs to be before we go forward with that.
Now, I'll, I'll add, it's, it's a slightly off-topic, but it has to do with the energy conservation. Some of you were on the email, but for those of you who weren't, we just learned today that our, our proposal to present green energy, or I forget what the title was, but essentially, our energy, the District 158 story of energy conservation to save tax dollars to be reallocated toward the learning process in our children, were adopted as a panel presentation at the Tri-Conference come November. So, it's a, it's a really big deal, just learned about this afternoon. We'll be presenting on the District 158 story at the Tri-Conference in November.
There's, thank you, Scott. There's one more thing. I've also been in extensive discussion with a company called Building IQ. They have actually software programs that will work with our digital automation system, interact with them, and actually help us optimize the performance of the control system in the background electronically. It was a software package designed by the government of Australia years ago, not that many years ago, and it's being brought into the States for consideration. And we just, according to them, we're in a perfect situation with the kind of HVAC control systems that we have in place, to try to take advantage of that. They're, they just gave me numbers today of what the opportunities are for the high school, and I'm trying to understand what they're telling me to, to gain the, you know, consensus that I agree with their numbers and so forth. But, discussions are going to start now on what, what some kind of a guarantee, they, they told me it would be like a guarantee investment. We would have to give out a little money for their software package, but we'd get savings out of it. So, I'll, more, more news to come. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions from O&M Updates? Thank you for the concise report there, Mr. Rukasik. If there are no questions, we'll move to 11.2, the Elevator Service Contract.
This is a service contract we, we've had forever, since we've had elevators. We need someone qualified to take a look at them once in a while, so they remain safe for the operational, and to coordinate with the state regulatory agencies on annual hydraulic inspections, and demonstrate that we're doing our preventive maintenance to be in compliance with state requirements for management of elevators. And we're proposing to change vendors. We used to work with this vendor many years ago. I, it's my understanding from feeling out my peers in other districts, that they've had an overhaul and improvement in service lately. I don't know any of the names of the people on here, so that's a good thing, compared to many years ago, as people were retiring. But, we've had a pretty long run with the last company, but this company's more competitive.
Any questions about this one?
How's the rate compared to prior contract?
I can tell you in a second.
Or, if you give me like 10 seconds. Sure.
I'm sorry, I hope you didn't start the timer.
Yeah.
I have a database of service contracts that I share with the Board every year at the department update, and I'm finding it. That's the actual contract, here we go, right here. Our present contract, which expired is 4,191. And this is 5,400. I will tell you, this is one business that the, the prevailing wage for these service guys is just, it's one of the highest ones on the prevailing wage schedule. And I'm sure their insurance policy is pretty huge as well.
Mm-hmm. Lot of liability there. Okay, thanks. Any question, I'm sorry, any additional questions? Any objection to moving this forward, then? Okay, we'll go ahead and move that forward. 11.3, Gym Floor Refinishing Bid. Mr. Rukasik.
This is on our life cycle replacement schedule. Long time coming. We have 19 years of life out of that gym floor with not sanding it down to bare wood. I've been told by my peers that the average is eight years, so we've got a lot of mileage out of that floor. We've sanded and recut this one pretty frequently, because we served lunch on this gym floor for a number of years. Also, Leggie has asked for some enhancements with painting of games on there, and I highly support that, and we have a lot of gym tape, which causes layers of finish to peel off and make the floor look a little worse. So, I appreciate that. But, the price is a little bit higher than our expectation and our history, since we're doing only one floor this year on a per-square-foot basis. Again, it's just a little bit high, but this, this is a fine company. I reached out to the other company I invited, and I was told that they just plain old missed it, they didn't see the bid opportunity, that they were sent. And then they were going on vacation and da-da-da-da, so I have no reason not to recommend these people. They've done most of the sanding down the bare wood for us.
Okay, any, any questions about this bid from the committee or the board? Any objections with moving this forward then? Okay, we'll go ahead and move that one forward. This one is 11 dot four, sight lighting enhancement bid.
So the last remaining, one of the last remaining parcels that the school district has that has sight lighting that's maybe a little less equitable as compared to our other parcels is the Leggie Elementary School property. And we are going to repave that parking lot this summer and put some full depth reclamation in some of the gravel base, so it would be the appropriate time to improve that. Mr. Higginson, his needs list had identified that this is something he had a concern with, and so we jumped on getting together a estimate of what that might take after we had an engineer do photometric layouts of the property to make sure we could get the, you know, what light levels and what the distribution of lighting on the property would be. This would enhance the lighting a little bit on the north side of the building and a whole lot on the south side of the building. And at the northeast and southwest entrance from, to the building at the end of the wings there, from there to the parking lot was pretty dark, and we should see noticeable improvement in those areas. We're very pleased to see this number of bids. A couple of the very qualified contractors had a pretty tight knit set of bids. The lowest bidder is a very fine company. We have no reason not to recommend it.
And what will, would you know what the number is on, I forget the, the light unit, is it lumens now?
Foot candles.
Foot candles?
Yeah.
How will this affect that foot handle rating or number?
That's a very good question, Paul, and I have the before and after photometric somewhere in my file system. Could I get back to you on that one?
Yeah, I didn't mean.
I don't want to hold up.
You got 10 seconds.
That one's going to take about a minute to find in my folders, I apologize, but I'd be happy to come back to it if you'd like.
I'm just, I know you said it'll enhance it, but I'm curious how, how much, and what type of lighting, lighting will this be?
You know what, maybe this will help you, because maybe it'll help everyone a more general kind of view of things. When we enhanced the lighting at Chesapeake and Martin, the same engineer, I worked with the same engineer, David Gage, and I said to Dave on the phone, I want to get the light level up comparable to what we, what we've got at Chesapeake and Martin now with the improved lighting. And we have that.
Okay.
And there's an average foot candle, there's a high and a low number, it's all on the photometric layout plan. If I could find it, I'll bring it to you after the meeting.
That's fine. And the, what kind of lighting will this be going forward?
Oh, it's LED. Yeah, we have all LED on the site now for five years, and we would not want to, you know.
Just making sure. Okay, any additional questions from the board?
Yeah, just curious. I'm glad we got a lot of bids, but the standard deviation, especially, is pretty, pretty kind of way out there.
May I just suggest to you that I, I always get a cringe when I see that these bid services get ahold of our documents, and some of these people that came out, you could tell they were very unprofessional, or they must have businesses in other circles where it's not as sophisticated as what's going on around here.
I mean, you didn't see anything in the bid packet that, that raised any concern for us?
No.
That we see or know.
Associate Electric, Kerry Electric, Jasco Electric, those companies have done some of our product, they've built our buildings. They know our property, and those are the tight ones.
And three of those companies.
Yeah. Yeah, these outliers, Genesis I've never heard of, Altech I've heard of, but I haven't had an opportunity to do business with them.
Okay, any, any additional questions from the board or the committee? Any objections with moving this forward? All right, we'll go ahead and move this one forward as well. The last one, it always gets me when we talk about toilet partition systems. 11 dot five, Mr. Runcasek, anything to highlight on this one?
It's on the life cycle projects list, and it's definitely needed. Principal McLaughlin and I did take a quick tour of the, of the building, and there's metal partitions that are rusted pretty bad, so.
Okay.
It's time. I don't know if you want to get into the details, but.
I think we have the details.
If only, well, can I put it this way to you? Uric acid does eat metal.
I agree.
Oh, it's not. These are new, this is a new, we've been doing this, if you walk around the high school, most of the high school, the boys bathrooms now have this, it's a composite material.
Right.
It's very hard to do graffiti on, it's very durable. We've had some, we think they're football players or something that have figured something out on a couple of them, but most of them, they're very durable. We've put them in other elementary schools without a hitch. They should last a long, long, long time. I just hope you like the color, because we're going to look at it for a long time.
Well, yeah. Okay, any, I love this topic. Any, any questions from the committee or the board on this one? Any objections with moving this forward then? I hear no objections, we'll move this one forward as well. I'll turn it over to Mr. Fleck for item 12.
Okay, 12.1, we have committee of the whole minutes from March 7th and regular meeting minutes from March 21st. Is there any questions, comments about that? Otherwise, we can move that forward for the consent agenda. Very good. And 12.2, got some closed session meeting minutes that we needed to take a look at for January, February, and March. Okay, any comments on those? All right, we'll, we'll address those appropriately and move on to item 13. It is 7:35, I will make a motion to, oh, stop. Okay, we don't, see, for reminding me. We're going to have a little public comment here. If you don't mind, I'm going to start with Dr. Rowe. You reminded me.
All right, well, if I go first, that means that I don't have to repeat everything everybody else has already said. I, you know, I, I'm going to be a little selfish here, as I sat in, in the principal's seat that had just been named superintendent back in, in April, right around the time when our former board president, Don Gisell, announced that he was stepping down from the school board, you know, we were brainstorming potential candidates to, to reach out to or to consider for appointment for his seat for the duration of his seat. And, you know, selfishly, I get to say that I'm honored that my recommendation was who, who came through. I've known, I've known Rashawn since she moved to the district. I had the pleasure when we were going through the renew process, not the renew process, but the, the counseling process to seek the highest, what's that called? I forget, we didn't do it. Anyway, we were, I was in a meeting, and I, and I was sitting next to a new student who just, who had just moved to the district, and, and right out of the gate, she shared the most profound and impressive views of what high school is like for freshmen that I had really come in contact with, and just so happens that it was Brianna, it was Rashawn's daughter. So that was my first introduction to the Walker family, that, a family that I have grown to know both as, as principal of their children's school, and then now had the opportunity to work with Rashawn as a board member. And although our time was, was somewhat short, it was, it was very rich, and I thank you for your service to the community, to our school district. I thoroughly enjoyed getting to learn my new position alongside of you. You've done an excellent job and been an excellent board member, and I hope that you will stay close and active in our educational community because it is, you have brought a, a viewpoint that our community saw the need, and our educational community has valued. And I value as a board member and respected board member and friend, so I thank you for your dedication, esteem, and your service.
I'm going to open the floor for any board members that would like to say some comments.
You'll be here all night. I just, yeah, I want to echo what Dr. Rowe said. I, I agree. I obviously am excited you're on the board because you're another woman, gives me something. But, but what I loved most about our time together is that you brought something different to the board with your professional experience in the way of security, and, and I think it's something that we needed at the time, and, and a different viewpoint, and I'm going to really miss you. So thank you, and I hope you stick around in the public eye, and we'll see you again. Thank you.
I'm just super impressed that from the first meeting that you joined us, you were contributing at such a high level, like the first, very first things that came out of your mouth were really beneficial, and I felt like every time you responded or talked about things, we were all learning so much. And again, has to do with your professional experience and just who you are, which was really, really great. And I'm going to miss you, but my wife is like devastated, so we'll have to figure out something there.
Probably not a whole lot of additional ad because you've all said it so well, but I guess my main, main impression is that additional perspective that you brought that I certainly didn't have in terms of specialized topics that are really meaningful to students, and that's by way of your background, but also by way of your drive and passion to offer your opinions and listen and learn, and I've done that very quickly, like Bill says, from day one, so tremendous amount of respect for what you've done, and I know it's a tough spot to come into as an appointee, somewhat off-cycle, so you did that job extremely well, and very much appreciated.
Go ahead. I go ahead? Okay. I can't echo everybody else's words enough. I, I've been impressed with your professionalism, your character, your commitment, not just to this board, but to the students in this district. I'm going to sorely miss you. I know that you're a neighbor of ours just around the corner in the neighborhood, so I look forward to reconnecting with you in our area, but in this forum, I will sorely miss you. So I wish you nothing but the best, and I look forward to keeping in touch with you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't get the memo that you weren't going to be at the next meeting, so I wasn't really ready. I was, had a lot of thoughts about just wanting to express gratitude for how much you, absolutely how much you added to the party here as far as, I mean, I don't even know for six, seven months you've been on, but it was, you did an exceptional job. It is not easy just coming on, being appointed as a board member and getting up to speed, but absolutely, as Bill said, you contributed immediately, and absolutely, everything you, you would add, both in open and closed sessions, was, was highly valuable, and, you know, I just thought you did a tremendous job, and we will absolutely miss you.
Maybe I should have gone first. So when you, when we appointed you, you had a lot of really good candidates apply with you. It was a good, strong field, and I think if I remember correctly, you were traveling, and we, we interviewed you by video, and, and that's always a challenge because it's, it sometimes puts you at a disadvantage to not be here to fully interact, but you, despite that, you, you definitely shined through as, as the leading candidate. And you did not disappoint. I agree with Bill that you contributed right from the beginning, clearly prepared for all the meetings, had a lot to say for, a lot of things for us to think about when we were making our decisions, and I, like everybody else, will miss you quite a bit. I hope that you continue to support what we're doing here. I know that we will all probably come to you and ask for your perspective on things as a solid member of the community, as a parent in the district. So thank you, and I wish you the best. You get to say something.
So first of all, I just want to say thank you all for the opportunity to serve with you and for being so welcoming. I think I spoke about it early on in one of our meetings when I talked about, it's one thing to cast a wide net and to welcome someone, it's a totally different thing to actually make them feel welcomed every time they walk in a room. So I appreciate the fact that from the very beginning, from the board members to the cabinet and everyone, you guys were so welcoming, and you made it easy to be, to be able to be myself and to feel comfortable. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate the opportunity for being able to serve with you guys, and I'm definitely going to continue to support and be here. So if you need to call me in an area of expertise, we can do that. If we need to see each other outside with our kids, we can do that, because I definitely consider you guys not only my board members, but I've, I've come to consider you kind of friends. So I am definitely going to miss all of you, and I'm going to miss our time here together, but I'm not going away, and I'm definitely, I have a sixth grader, so I will be in the district for a while, and I will definitely continue to support the great work that we started together. And I just hope that when the new board member gets seated, that she is ready and willing to work hard to continue what we've started.
Actually, I have one more of those medals to hand out. Okay, next agenda item, 7:45, I will make a motion to go into closed session for the items listed in the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Garin. This is a roll call.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Garin?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.